Good afternoon. Welcome to the State Energy Planning Board meeting. I'm Doreen Harris, President and CEO of NYSERDA and the Chair of the State Energy Planning Board. As a reminder, today's meeting is open to the public to observe both in person here in Albany and on our live stream. So thank you to everyone who is here with us today and for those who tuned in online as well. Next slide. Before turning to our agenda, I'd like to welcome the members of the State Energy Planning Board and their designees. I'll ask that each board member or delegate introduce themselves with their title, name, and agency.
Good afternoon. Richard Ball, New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets.
Good afternoon. Roberta Riordan, Department of Labor.
Good afternoon. Kisho Santiago, Deputy Secretary of State. I'm the Designee for Secretary of State Walter Mosley.
Good afternoon. Jessica Waldorf, Chief of Staff and Director of Policy Implementation, here on behalf of Chair Christian.
Sean Maher, Executive Deputy Commissioner for DEC, here on behalf of Commissioner Amanda Lufden.
Terry O'Leary, Executive Deputy Commissioner, New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services, on behalf of Commissioner Bray.
Kevin Malone, New York State Department of Health, representing State Health Commissioner Jim McDonald.
Vincent Ravishere, Designee for Commissioner Hope Knight, Economic Development.
Carter Strickland, Chief Sustainability Officer at SUNY, here on behalf of Chancellor John B. King Jr.
Thank you. Colleen Smith Lemon with New York State Department of Transportation. I'm reporting for Transportation Commissioner Dominguez. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Rich Dewey, President and CEO of the New York Independent System Operator. Thanks.
Thank you. For the record, I note we have a quorum for today's meeting. I also want to note that Assemblymember Barrett will be participating and voting at today's meeting remotely by video conference due to extraordinary circumstances. Welcome, Assemblymember Barrett.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here.
Thank you. I will now turn to today's business. Next slide, please. Please note for the record that this agenda was shared with board members and posted on the Energy Plan website for the public to review on Friday, June 13th. As you see here, our agenda today is to review and approve the minutes of the May 27th, 2025 Board Meeting to discuss analysis conducted for the State Energy Plan, to discuss select Energy Plan topic areas, and to discuss other business. Next slide. Before we dive into our agenda today, I'd like to share some updates since we met last month. And next slide. As we have previously discussed as a board, the maintenance and expansion of transmission infrastructure is a critical part of our energy plan. I am therefore pleased to share an update from the Northeast States Collaborative on interregional transmission. New York State, through the Department of Public Service and NYSERDA, participates in this collaborative alongside eight other northeastern states to explore enhanced transmission ties. And just this week, the collaborative released a request for information to identify potential opportunities across two of the three control areas in the Northeast, including the NISO service area. This interregional approach can help cost-effectively enhance grid reliability, improve market efficiency, expand clean energy use, and reduce costs for consumers. Second, on the topic, a timely topic indeed of extreme heat, I also wanted to cover two updates. First, last week, Governor Hochul announced the launch of the Essential Plan Cooling Program, an affordability initiative that provides free air conditioners to eligible New Yorkers who have asthma and who are enrolled in the Essential Plan for health insurance. This initiative is part of the state's Extreme Heat Action Plan, launched in 2022, and is designed to mitigate the health impacts of worsening extreme heat on New York. And certainly on this topic, yesterday, a little before 1:30 p.m., the day officially became the hottest in more than a decade in New York City. Yesterday's statewide peak electric demand was 31,857 megawatts. You'll hear more about that in just a minute, but notably behind the meter solar, as you know, we've reached a six gigawatt goal and beyond, actually reduced this peak demand by 5% or more than 1,500 megawatts, and reduced the total electricity load by 6%. So we can see the impact of these resources in these extreme conditions. But following up on this, I would like to invite Rich Dewey, the President and CEO of the New York Independent System Operator, to share a few words on electric grid readiness and response thus far during the heat wave. Rich?
Thank you, Chair Harris, and thank you to the board. As you pointed out, yesterday was our first hot weather day of this summer. It was a very challenging and yet successful day for grid operations. You mentioned the peak was near 32,000 megawatts, which is getting pretty close to our all-time peak, which we achieved in 2013, which was just under 34,000 megawatts. But this happened very early in the summer, so that is a predictor potentially of some stressful days coming ahead. The peak generally hits much later in the summer when we get those long stretches of very hot weather and the cooling effects don't get to take shape. I think it was, you mentioned the contribution to solar. There was also a firm, good contribution of wind over the peak, which was helpful, and a very, very successful deployment of demand response, which if, but for those components, we likely would have hit a new all-time peak. So I think it's indicative of the all-in approach that we need to have towards maintaining reliability, electric reliability for the state of New York. In addition to the contribution of the units we had planned on, when the load came in considerably higher in the afternoon, we also were leaning on a number of legacy power plants that were more than 70 years old. Those units performed very well, but I think it's indicative of some of the challenges that we have ahead of us with an aging fleet and some of the steps that we need to focus on as we manage through the grid in transition. And Doreen, you also mentioned the Northeast Planning Collaborative. We had a very, very tightly coordinated orchestration of power transfers with New England, with PJM, with Quebec and Ontario. So it's indicative of the partnership that we have here in the Northeast. If any of those components that I just talked about weren't successfully achieved, we could have had a very different outcome yesterday when the heat built up. But it's all part of the readiness, it's part of the planning, and it's all part of that really diverse fleet of resources that we have where we're not relying on any one fuel type or any one type of resource. And it's so valuable to New York as we move forward. I'm just going to give a shameless plug to our Power Trends Report, which just came out. It is probably the leading report on the status, state, health, and plans for the power grid within New York State. It's our annual report. You can get it from our website at www.nyso.com, and I would encourage you to take a look at that. It's really helpful. It's written in every man language and helps people understand what's going on in the power system. So, so far, successful summer, and we're going to continue to work hard to make sure that that stays true. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, thank you. We'll hear more about resource diversity and really how we see that diversity being beneficial into the coming number of decades today from this very team, and a lot of alignment between the work of our analytic effort here and the Power Trends Report. So I'm glad to see that there's alignment in that respect. And thank you for the updates, and I see cooler weather is coming, so hopefully you have a more relaxing weekend. Next slide, please. In a very timely update on generation planning, talk about diverse resources. On Monday, Governor Hochul announced a directive for the New York Power Authority to develop and construct a zero-emission advanced nuclear power plant in upstate New York to support a reliable and affordable electric grid while providing the necessary zero-emission electricity to achieve a clean energy economy. So I was pleased to join President and CEO Driscoll with the governor. And foundationally, NIPA will be working with the Department of Public Service to develop one or more nuclear energy facilities capable of producing at least one gigawatt of electricity either alone or in partnership with private entities. And certainly, this does align very much with the responsible Advanced Nuclear Development in New York master plan that we have been advancing at the governor's directive over the past year, and very much looking forward to that collaboration with NIPA, DPS, and other members of this board to make progress on developing this promising energy resource. Next slide, please. The next item on the agenda today is to accept the meeting minutes of the State Energy Planning Board held on May 27th, 2025. Are there any comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes into the record and we'll post them on the website. Do I have a second? All members in favor? Anyone opposed? The minutes are accepted into the record. Thank you very much. Next slide. Okay, moving to our next agenda item. Today, we will continue to hear from agency staff who will provide updates on the substantive topic areas being developed for the State Energy Plan, consistent with the scope that this board approved at our March meeting. And I want to reiterate how appreciative I am of the staff teams that have been working together on this effort and look forward to hearing from them later. Today specifically, we will be hearing from staff leading the development of two overarching analyses and six planned topic areas. For each, the presenters will provide an overview of the key themes and potential recommendations that are under development. You will have an opportunity to ask questions after the first two presentations, and then after a break, we'll hear multiple presentations before pausing for discussion. Next slide. So first, before I hand the mic to Carl Moss, NYSERDA Senior Vice President for Policy Analysis and Research, I'd like to tee up our first presentation on our pathways analysis. I think it's very important to note that what we are presenting here today is different than the integration analysis we completed for the Climate Action Council Scoping Plan. For the scoping plan, we approached the modeling with a top-down perspective. We looked at the emissions requirements in the Climate Act and demonstrated the nature of the changes that would be needed to meet those emissions limits. And as some of you will remember, as stated in the Climate Action Council Scoping Plan, advancement and achievement of the CLCPA goals requires a transformative, challenging, and potentially disruptive level of effort across all sectors of the economy. This is a reality we are experiencing as a state, especially with the headwinds that make progress ever more challenging. However, there is extraordinary progress that we will be reflecting on today as part of our State Energy Plan. And the State Energy Plan analysis does take a different approach. Instead, for planning scenarios, this analysis uses a bottom-up assessment of the various energy supply and delivery systems that will be available to meet forecasted energy needs through 2040, accounting for policies, technology availability, and consumer uptake, and the energy planning law requirements to consider energy affordability, reliability, economic development, and jobs, equity, and environmental needs. So as we have previously noted, we have seen numerous impacts to the economy that is changing the equation for infrastructure development of any type, from the disruptions due to the pandemic, to the subsequent supply chain disruptions, and inflation. And of course, now, new changes in energy policy from the federal administration, including the potential to cancel tax credits provided under the Inflation Reduction Act, planned denial of permits for wind generation, and attempts to remove state-based clean car and clean truck rules by revoking California's ability to enforce stricter vehicle emission standards. This will all likely impact state progress on statutory emissions goals. So the analysis you will see today incorporates these dynamics regarding the potential to reduce future greenhouse gas emissions from all sectors of the economy over the 15-year planning period to 2040. In addition, I would say we are continuing to monitor changes in federal policy and may need to explore the impacts of these changes in the final State Energy Plan that we will be driving toward this year. Yet even with these challenges, the current analysis shows that New York can build on our successes, such as the creation of the nation's largest green bank, the deployment of six gigawatts of distributed solar ahead of schedule, the completion of South Fork Wind, the groundbreaking for the Champlain Hudson Power Express, Empire Wind One, and Sunrise Wind. And of course, we have Governor Hochul's commitment to invest over $1 billion of public funds in the Sustainable Future Program, the largest single-climate investment in state history. And importantly, this analysis demonstrates that we can continue to make meaningful progress toward our energy goals while preserving reliability and affordability for our citizens. So with that, I'll hand the presentation over to Carl to take it from here. Carl?
Thank you, Chair Harris. So I'll give a brief intro and then turn over the mic to several of our key staff who've been working over the past months on the work. During the March Board Meeting, you all heard a presentation on the techno-economic pathways analysis that staff were planning to conduct to support the State Energy Plan. Since that time, our team has made considerable progress on this analytic work, which you will hear about in just a moment. I'd first like to acknowledge that conducting such an analysis during a time of uncertainty is challenging, as Chair Harris noted. And it's true, with all aspects of our economy, the energy system has been impacted by the supply chain disruptions, high interest rates, and inflation, and changing federal policy landscape. Yet the work must provide a rigorous economy-wide view of how New York will meet the energy needs over the planning horizon while making progress on the state's policy objectives. Looking out over 15 years requires assumptions regarding technology progress and policy achievement. To address uncertainties in both these areas, the analysis takes a realistic yet ambitious approach and explores several potential scenarios to better understand the full spectrum of possible outcomes. So with that brief intro, it's my pleasure to hand it over to Nick Patonay, our Assistant Director for NYSERDA's Policy Analysis Team, to present on the techno-economic pathways scenarios. Next slide, please.
All right. Thanks, Carl. I'm Nick Patonay. I'm Assistant Director for Policy Analysis at NYSERDA, and today I'll be walking through our pathways analysis, which will provide some of the analytic underpinning to the State Energy Plan. All right. So we'll start with a bit of an overview on the pathways analysis modeling approach. There's two main modules that we use in the analysis. The first is our economy-wide model. This model takes as input key data from other NYSERDA industry studies and programs. It models stock turnover and sales of key equipment across the buildings, transportation, and other demand sectors. This allows us to develop a perspective on fuel use as well as electric loads and peaks and net emissions. Our information on electric loads is then passed off to the second module, which is our electric sector model. And this model builds out an electric system to meet those loads, maintain reliability, and achieve any scenario-specific policy constraints. That information on the electric system costs and emissions then feeds back to the economy-wide model for an aggregated rollup of economy-wide benefits and costs. Next slide, please. Okay, so before we go into our forward-looking modeling, we wanted to start with a bit of a perspective on energy use in New York State today. And this is informed by information from the NYSERDA Patterns and Trends Report. So first, we observe on fossil fuel use today. Fossil fuels are still the dominant source of primary energy in New York, with petroleum and natural gas accounting for about 75% of primary energy. Within the power sector, gas is the largest source of fuel for electricity, which is followed by nuclear and hydro, and other renewables are representing a growing share, reflecting progress toward the clean energy standard. And then finally, on the demand side, we see that primary consumers of energy are buildings, both commercial and residential, accounting for about 50% of energy use, followed by transportation at 40%, and then industrial makes up much of the remainder. Slide, please. All right. So given future uncertainty, we do take a scenario-based approach to our modeling. And there's five different energy futures that we model as part of this exercise. On the left, we have some figures that will track electric demand as well as other energy use to help illustrate the magnitude of change across these different scenarios, which we'll unpack in some of the later slides. Our first case is what we call the no-action case. You could think of this as sort of the world absent the Climate Act and the New York State and local energy policies that have stemmed from it. It includes an extension of historic policy interventions, native market adoption, and federal policies as of the time of the modeling earlier this year. We recognize here again that there's significant uncertainty on the future of many federal clean energy policies, and we plan to explore any impacts of future changes as we go into the final energy plan. This case will act as a point of comparison against which we can compare the other scenarios to understand what are the net benefits and net costs and other trade-offs of New York's clean energy policies. Our second case is what we call current policies. This case layers on top of no action, New York State and local clean energy policies and our current progress toward achieving them. This includes policies and programs really across the entire economy. Building space includes things like all-electric new construction, advanced building codes, alongside utility, NYSERDA, and HCR energy efficiency and electrification programs. Transportation sector, this includes initiatives to incentivize adoption of zero-emission vehicles, including, for example, advanced clean cars and advanced clean trucks. We acknowledge here again that there's federal uncertainty on the future of these programs, but we continue to model them as current policies. So we wait for any federal changes to play out through the courts and also to see how states respond. And then finally, in the electric sector, we include deployment of clean electric generation in line with the CES biennial review, which includes a 70% renewable grid in 2033 as well as 0x40. Next slide, please. Our third case is what we call additional action. This case includes all the policies from current policies, and then layers on top of that, continued acceleration of adoption of clean energy technologies out to the future from some mix of future policies. These can include things like environmental markets, increasing investments, and other recommendations from the individual sectors of the State Energy Plan. As Doreen noted in her introductory remarks, current policies and additional actions are our core planning cases for this exercise. They represent a more bottoms-up accounting, for example, current policies reflecting the energy system that we expect under current policies, and additional action reflecting achievable but ambitious further progress. Our final cases are what we call the net-zero cases. These are more top-down cases and reflect what would be needed for full achievement of the 2050 economy-wide emission limits from the Climate Act. These scenarios continue to lean on similar levers like electrification and efficiency, but to a much greater extent, while also introducing new levers that aren't contemplated by current policies. In our work, we have two different net-zero scenarios. The primary difference here is on the use of hybrid heating or buildings that retain a gas connection for use on the coldest days. Net Zero A has limited use of this hybrid heat pump and more all-electric customers. Net Zero B has expanded use of customers that retain a supplemental gas heating system. And this allows us to sort of explore the potential value of a larger residual gas network on mitigating electric system peaks and the associated build and costs. All right. Next slide, please. Okay, so now we'll go into our key demand sectors. Next slide. And we'll start here with an outlook on the building sector, which, as we saw earlier, accounts for about 50% of energy use today. Here, we have a slide on the residential sector, and I'll note the outset that we observe similar macro trends in the commercial space as well. In all cases, energy demand change is occurring as a result of drivers like new construction, investments in efficiency, and HVAC turnover with increasing deployments of heat pumps in various scenarios. On the left, we have a figure that shows residential heat pump sales shares over time to help understand the magnitude of change across the different scenarios. What we see in the no-action case is only moderate adoption of heat pump and shells, shell deployment, and this results largely in this case from legacy codes and organic adoption through 2040. As we look at our policy cases, in blue and green, the current policies and additional action cases, we see the effect of state and local policies helping accelerate adoption of efficiency and heat pumps, getting to about 1.2 to 1.7 million heat pumps by the end of the modeling period. These planning cases, efficiency is really a bedrock strategy, and stock-wide adoption of efficiency outpaces the customers who are adopting a heat pump, as there's sort of more lower-cost, higher NPV efficiency investment opportunities. And this helps mitigate both the costs and the electric system impacts of customers who are adopting a heat pump. I also want to note that in the additional action case, by the end of the modeling period, heat pump sales outpace the sales of gas equipment, which represents a transformational market shift. And then finally, in orange, we see the net-zero cases. Here, we see that achievement of full net zero would require a significant increase in adoption of efficiency while also accelerating heat pump adoption, such that by 2035, nearly all new sales of HVAC equipment are heat pumps. And this is needed because it takes time for increasing sales shares to transform through the stock, because HVAC equipment has a relatively long useful life. We observe here that there is a significant gap between what would be needed under net zero compared to our core planning cases. Next slide. Okay, so now we'll look at the transportation sector, which, as we saw earlier, accounts for about 40% of current energy use. And here, in the transportation sector, energy use change is being driven largely by the shift toward vehicle electrification, a transition which is really already underway but is threatened by recent federal actions. Left, we have figures that show light-duty vehicle sales shares, medium and heavy-duty vehicle sales shares for zero-emission vehicles across the cases to help illustrate the magnitude of change. The no-action case sees some adoption of light-duty vehicles that are zero-emission vehicles as well as medium duty, and this is from federal incentives, organic growth, and commercial adoption. This adoption is further accelerated in the policy cases, the current policies, and additional action case, from the actions that New York has taken. This includes significant contributions from advanced clean cars and advanced clean trucks. Again, we acknowledge federal uncertainty here. But this does lead to a significant amplification in the amount of vehicle electrification. We do model different trajectories in the near term toward achievement of ACC and ACT, reflecting some near-term uncertainty on deployment. And then finally, as we look at the net-zero cases, we observe here that there's really a more narrow gap between the net-zero cases and the policy cases compared to what we saw on the prior slide, which again reflects the value of programs like advanced clean cars and advanced clean trucks. Finally, another important potential decarbonization lever here is renewable fuel blending, which is useful for both on-road but also off-road transportation demand. And in the additional action case, we achieve about 20% renewable distillate blending and 35% renewable jet fuel blending by the end of the modeling period. Next slide. So now we'll look at our final demand sector, which is the industrial sector. And here, the main driver of change, which is really occurring across all of our cases, is industrial activity growth. New large loads are expected to add about 16 terawatt-hours of new electric demand, which will create further electric and energy system needs. And planning early to ensure abundant supply for these loads can ensure that New York can continue to take advantage of economic growth and economic development opportunities. Energy efficiency is part of every scenario here for the industrial sector. It's scaled up further in the additional action scenario, consistent with findings from the NYSERDA Industrial Potential Study, and to an even greater extent in the net-zero cases. Net-zero cases also introduce fuel switching, including electrification of lower-temperature processes, as well as fuel switching for harder-to-decarbonize industrial processes, for example, hydrogen and renewable natural gas. Okay, so that wraps up sort of the demand side. Next slide. Now we'll look at some of our economy-wide results. One more, please. Starting with our economy-wide annual loads, which are derived from the individual demand sectors that we just looked at. And what we observe here across all cases is that annual loads are expected to grow, both in the through 2030 period but also through the 2040 period to a greater extent. This load growth is driven in large part by new large loads that are connecting to the system, adding about 16 terawatt-hours, varying extents across the pathways, vehicle electrification. In our policy cases, the current policies, additional action case, see further load growth, and this is largely driven by further vehicle electrification, which adds about 14 to 17 terawatt-hours. In these cases, in the building sector, stock-wide adoption of energy efficiency outpaces the customers who are switching to heat pumps, which helps to sort of mitigate any building sector load growth. Finally, in the net-zero cases, we see really the most transformational load growth. This is driven largely by further acceleration and adoption of heat pumps, while also the introduction of industrial electrification. As Doreen noted in her opening remarks, this would require really a transformational infrastructure buildup. Next slide. So in addition to annual loads, we also wanted to look at annual system peaks, which are important for energy planners. We observe similar trends to what we saw on the prior slide, with peak load growing both in the through 2030 period and also in the through 2040 period. both in the through 2030 period and also in the through 2040 period. New large loads are adding about 2.5 gigawatts of load across all the scenarios, and vehicle electrification to varying degrees is driving further peak load growth. In our policy cases, that additional vehicle electrification is adding about 3.5 gigawatts of further load. And as on the prior slide, stockwide adoption of efficiency helps offset the impact of customers who are adopting heat pumps, mitigating peak load growth in those cases from building electrification. As we look at our net zero cases, we see again the most transformational peak load growth, but we also observe here that net zero B, which is the case that had more customers retaining a backup gas system, are able to reduce that peak load growth by about 3 gigawatts by relying on those systems on the coldest, most challenging days. The timing of the system peak is also very important. We observe that no-action, current policies and additional action remain summer peaking over the modeling period. Net zero A becomes a winter peaking largely from the increased adoption of heat pumps and their draw on those very cold days, while net zero B becomes a dual-peaking system where the summer and winter peaks are sort of within a margin of error from each other, conceivably occur in either summer or winter, depending on the weather that year. We also see significant value in flexible loads. These are things like moving your charging pattern or shifting, building heating demand within a few hours in helping to mitigate peak growth, and these can contribute about a gigawatt in peak reductions in 2040 in the planning cases. All right, next slide. Okay, so as mentioned on an earlier slide, we do take those loads and then feed them into our electric system model, which allows us to sort of build out an electric system that meets those loads, maintains reliability, and also meets any scenario-specific policy constraints. Today, we'll look at two bookends on the additional action planning case. One has full achievement of zero by 40, and the other looks at what could happen if we continue to face deployment headwinds as a result of the post-COVID economy and changes in federal policies. Start with the case that has zero by 40 achievement. Here we see that realization of a 70% renewable grid, consistent with the CES biennial review findings, is delayed to about 2033, reflecting near-term deployment headwinds and also growing load, which is increasing the denominator of the equation. To get to zero by 40, a significant ramp-up of deployment is needed. You observe that in the colored bars on the left. You see, for example, in yellow, significant additions in solar, and blue, significant additions in wind, both land-based and offshore wind, and in the purple, increased adoption in battery storage, which is leading to a more diverse set of resources on the system. We also see that preserving existing hydro and nuclear assets are essential for zero by 40, as these remain major contributors to zero by 40 system. Finally, as we look at the thermal fleet, we do acknowledge that many of the current generation assets are quite old and expected to have age-based retirements over the modeling period. We do see that about 6 gigawatts of those are repowered, reflecting the need for their reliability contributions. And in our modeling for our dispatchable emission-free resource, we're using hydrogen as a proxy resource. We'll acknowledge that there could be a variety of other resources that could contribute that firm reliability, and we plan to explore those going into the final energy plan. But under the green hydrogen assumption, the entire thermal fleet in 2040 needs to convert to be able to run on that green hydrogen fuel, so all 17 gigawatts are converted. The overall combustion fleet is smaller by the end of the model period, which you could see in that salmon-colored bar in 2040, and this reflects the reliability contributions of other assets that are added to the grid, things like chippy, therefore hydro imports, as well as storage and other generation assets. Okay, so now we'll look at the other bookend, which is the same load, but looking at what could happen if we continue to face deployment headwinds. As mentioned, this could occur from federal policy changes as well as challenges with the post-COVID economy. It could materialize in a number of ways, for example, lost deployment years, increased project attrition, potentially the inability to add new offshore wind that's not currently permitted until around 2036. We see here is that while there's still significant additions of renewables, the sensitivity shows a meaningful reduction in solar and wind capacity compared to the core scenario that we saw on the prior slide in 2040. As a result of that decreased availability of renewables, we need to rely on the thermal units more. So Zone J repowers another 2.2 gigawatts of combustion and combustion units in 2035. These are needed largely absent the lack of the nine gigawatts of offshore wind that were in the prior model in 2035. And the residual thermal fleet is higher, at about 1.2 gigawatts higher at the end of the modeling period, but we do want to note that this is still lower than at the start of the modeling period. And while gas generation is about 50 terawatt-hours lower than at the start of the modeling period, we do see a potential need for about 15 terawatt-hours of natural gas generation with the lower build-out of renewables on the system. Natural gas is really just one of several resources that could potentially provide this energy need. For example, this could also be met by 2 gigawatts of new nuclear with additional transmission, part of which could come from a project like was announced earlier this week. This could also come from RNG combustion or some blend of the two. In this case, we do, though, see that as we look out past 2040, renewable additions can outpace load growth, and by the 2045 time period, we do expect a zero by 40 grid. Sorry, zero by 45 grid. Next slide, please. Okay, so that was our electric system. Now we'll turn to the gas system, and we look here at residential customer count changes. And residential customers typically have firm gas service, and so we're using them as a proxy for firm customers, which are important infrastructure planning metric for the gas system. So what we see is that the gas system, really across all of our cases, remains a significant energy delivery resource over the study period and will require continued investment for safe and reliable provision. In the no-action case, which is the solid black line, we see that absent New York state and local policies, new construction and fuel switching from oil and electric resistance to natural gas could lead to a growing gas system. As we then look at our policy cases in blue and green, we see the value of New York state actions, things like all-electric new construction and building electrification programs in helping to stem near-term statewide customer growth and leading to longer-term customer declines. However, we do want to recognize that there is uncertainty here, as reflected in the shaded blue area. This reflects the range of projections in the most conservative cases from the utility long-term plans. We see that some utilities were projecting customer growth, others were projecting customer declines, and this regional variability paired with the need to meet peak conditions and contingency events could require still investments in the gas system that would require more granular local gas system analysis. Finally, as we look to our orange net zero cases, we see here the most transformational decline in customer counts. We also see net zero B, which is the case that has more customers, the backup gas connection, having a somewhat larger gas system here. But we do want to note, while there could be electric system value here, there's also a significant coordination challenge. Each customer would have to significantly reduce gas use and retain that usage on really the coldest days in order to reserve and preserve the economy-wide emission limits. This is a significant deployment challenge. Okay, next slide, please. In addition to customer counts, we also wanted to look at firm customer consumption. So here we have residential and commercial consumption as a proxy from customer demand. We see that across all the modeled cases, residential and commercial consumption is declining, reflecting the value of improved energy efficiency as well as electrification. Here again, we acknowledge uncertainty as reflected in the range of the most conservative cases from the utility long-term plans, with some utilities projecting growth and others projecting potential declines. And again, this regional variation and the need to meet peak day needs could still require local gas system investments. Finally, again, we see in orange, the most transformational consumption decline happening in the net zero cases as a result of building electrification and shell adoption. Next slide. Okay, so now we'll look at the economy-wide emissions story under New York Climate Act accounting. We see that even today, there's been meaningful progress, as reflected in the latest DC GHG inventory. Today's emissions are about 9.5% below the 1990 statewide baseline, and emission declines compared to the peak year of 2005 are about 20% lower. So there's been meaningful progress to date. Major drivers of future carbon reductions across all cases include things like transportation, electrification, device efficiency improvements, building shell improvements, and we see the value of New York policies in helping to accelerate further emission declines, things like renewables deployment, more aggressive building and transportation electrification, and improved building codes. However, we do see here, as we look at the 40% reduction target, that no case is achieving a 40% reduction in 2030. Even the net zero cases, which scale up ambition, are unable to achieve a 40% reduction in 2030, as it will take time for any new policies to take effect and translate into stock and emission reductions. Our core planning cases are achieving a 40% reduction around the 2036 to 2038 timeframe, reflecting the need for further progress. Next slide. We also look at our progress under IPCC accounting. This is the accounting framework that's used in many other jurisdictions, and looking at progress under both accounting frameworks to practice also used in the DC GHG inventory allows us to more directly compare our progress against some of our peers. What we see is that under IPCC accounting, our impacts are amplified both to date, with current progress at about 23% net declines compared to the 1990 baseline, as well as our future progress being amplified with our core planning cases in the 60% to 70% reduction range by the end of the period. We also see that current policies are within about 2 million metric tons of 40% net reduction in 2030, and additional action in net zero cases are able to achieve a 40% net reduction in this accounting framework by 2030. Next slide. All right, so now we'll wrap up with our key takeaways, key findings from the modeling exercise. What we see in terms of our near-term through 2030 infrastructure story is that the energy system is evolving in meaningful ways, really across all of the energy futures. We see that new loads are causing system growth, the replacement of aging stock is leading to improved efficiency, and some native adoption of clean energy technologies is already underway. We also see that state actions are helping to accelerate this evolution. Some of the major drivers of change include our clean electricity progress, for example, the 6 gigawatts of distributed solar, completion of South Fork Wind, 1 gigawatt of chippy transmission line and new hydro import, along with Empire One and Sunrise Wind, which are under construction, and the contracting for 10 gigawatts of large-scale renewable energy projects. We also see the value in transportation initiatives and the building space, all-electric new construction, advanced building codes, and heat pump and efficiency programs, as well as the $1 billion decarbonization commitment by New York State in 2025. However, we do note that incremental progress by 2030 is muted, as it will take time for the effects of any new policies to translate into stock transformation. Next slide. Now we look at the longer-term through 2040 infrastructure story for our core planning scenarios. We see that the impacts of existing policies will be felt more fully over time. So by 2040, about 17% to 24% of the residential heating stock is heat pumps. Also importantly, in the additional action case, by 2040, heat pump sales are outpacing natural gas equipment sales. We also see in the light-duty vehicle stock that zero emission vehicles account for 53% to 59% of the vehicle fleet. Significant transformation of the energy system is occurring in both current policies and additional action. Loads are increasing around 23% to 26%, peaks are increasing on a similar order of magnitude, and gas consumption in buildings is declining compared to 2025. We note that the gas system remains a crucial energy delivery system across all cases, and again, regional variation in peak day needs could require new gas system infrastructure. Final energy served by electricity increases from about 19% in 2025 up to 28% to 29% in 2040, and final energy served by fossil fuel consumption is declining from where it is today. We also see a significant scale-up of renewables deployment needed for zero by 40 and recognize that this is somewhat threatened by economic, the post-COVID economic changes, as well as federal policy challenges. And one last slide. In terms of our emission outlook, we see that New York state's existing policies are establishing a strong foundation for economy-wide emission reductions, with notable progress in power generation, transportation, and buildings. However, the progress has been impacted by a number of factors that are causing disruptions, including things like the COVID-19 pandemic and subsequent inflation, supply chain disruptions, as well as global events such as the energy supply and price impacts resulting from the Russian invasion of Ukraine. We also see that evolving federal policies and tariffs introduce uncertainty in the state's near-term emissions trajectory. As you look out to the long term, we do see again that the 40% reduction in emission is being impacted by these external shifts, and under the current set of assumptions, the planning scenarios hit a 40% reduction in the 2036 to 2038 timeframe. And when we look at our net zero cases, we see that achieving the long-term net zero economy-wide emission goal will necessitate substantial incremental efforts beyond what's contemplated in our current policies. So with that, I'm happy.
Thank you, Nick. That was great. I'll let the members of the board absorb a lot of that information. Maybe one quick question before I turn it over to the chair. In those bookends for the electricity scenarios, we saw in hydrogen in one but none in the other, and can you say again why there was that shift? Why we didn't see any green hydrogen in that second bookend?
Yeah, so green hydrogen essentially needs those same renewables to be able to produce the electrolytic hydrogen, and so that, the impact of that sort of delayed renewables build effectively rules out the ability to produce the amount of hydrogen that would be needed to backfill the sort of energy need that the gas units were providing.
Great, thank you, Nick. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the chair and to members to make any remarks or questions.
Thank you. Thank you both. Clearly, I had a chance to be a preview or two of this analysis a few times, and I wanted to offer just a few observations to kick off our questions. And I'd say that, first of all, I want to thank the analysis team. This is extraordinarily complex and requires thoughtful work, so thank you so much for making this milestone happen. I'd say that when we think about planning, I appreciate the fact that the planning scenarios that Nick presented today factor in multiple goals in a realistic way for each sector in the energy system. And I think that's something that's very important for us as we are planning in the long term, is that this uncertainty requires multiple scenarios to really ensure that we're meeting this affordable, reliable, clean, resilient grid of the future, given that uncertainty. But I think the insight into a range of possible energy pathways helps us to develop strategies that allow us to stay adaptable. And although we will be making progress, of course, toward our policy objectives, that adaptability, I think, will be quite central to our longer-term needs. And as mentioned earlier, we know we face challenges. These are challenges that the Climate Action Council perhaps did not foresee in 2019 and the subsequent years as we advanced the scoping plan. But importantly, and perhaps in a dynamic way, our ability to bring new renewable generation online may continue to be affected by actions at the federal level. So this is something that may evolve as this year develops and something that is hugely significant relative to the other issues that we're describing. But also with respect to the analysis, it shows us that reliability needs may require the maintenance or repowering of natural gas generating units in the 2030s and beyond. And this is where I had wanted to highlight the consistency of this analysis with the power trends reports that Rich just mentioned earlier today, where we see a call for repowering both renewable and combustion generating units in that timeframe. However, even so, even with these challenges, this analysis also shows us we can continue to make progress toward a clean energy economy. So even in the scenario where we experience significantly reduced build rates, I want to highlight the fact that renewable generation could increase 70% between 2025 and 2035. And while electricity use is expected to grow in part from economic development and electrification of transport and home heating, all major fuels that New York uses today, including natural gas and petroleum fuels, will continue to meaningfully contribute to our our energy mix through 2040. So in summary, this assessment demonstrates that even as we make progress, it is critically important to continue investment in all fuel systems, a diverse set of fuel systems to ensure safe and reliable provision of energy services for all New Yorkers. So with that, Carl, if you'd like to emcee, if you will, any questions, comments, I'd be happy to hand it to you.
Sure, Carter.
I have a very detailed, but hopefully short question related to data centers. Are those included in the commercial sector projections? And if so, is the scale meaningful, given the size of the vehicle, 14 to 17 terawatt-hours? If it is built into the building sector, you know, I observe that's otherwise has efficiency offsetting electrification.
Yeah, so Nick, maybe you can speak a little bit to that. I would say data centers, to the degree that they're in our econometric modeling, we always assume there's some data center growth, but we're seeing some new trends, which, Nick, you can speak to.
Yeah, so we do add that 16 terawatt-hours of new loads, which can be a mix of projects, but data centers could be part of that as well. As we noted, really kind of planning early for those loads is really essential to make sure that we can accommodate that load growth and reduce impacts potentially to the broader customer base, while also being able to take advantage of some of the economic development opportunities that could present.
Yeah, so it's in both. It's in the econometric as well as the large loads. I'd say New York is also different from other parts of the country, where our large loads are a real mix. So we've got some significant upstate, you know, new manufacturing that's driving that. So it's not just the AI, but, you know, whole large new job opportunities. Any other questions from the board members? Okay. So with that, we'll shift gears. We can go to the next slide. So we have a doubleheader today. Glad you came ready. So our next presentation will focus on energy affordability. So we're going to be shifting gears a little bit and talking about individual New York households and kind of what they're experiencing in the past and what they may experience going forward. This analysis offers new perspectives on New York's current affordability challenges, as well as any potential ways to reduce energy burdens. Understanding how our energy planning efforts might impact New Yorkers can be a critical consideration that's run through our entire plan. This new analysis provides a detailed view into the variation of potential future energy spend by New York households, allowing us to tailor planning considerations to best meet the needs of all New Yorkers. So with that, I'll turn the mic over to James Wilcox, our program manager for Nasser's Policy and Analysis Team, to discuss this work. Thanks, James.
Yeah, thanks so much, Carl. So I will walk through our analysis of household energy affordability over time. But first, I'm sorry, could you go to the next slide, please? But first, I'll start by looking at energy affordability today. So across the US and across New York, households face affordability challenges. But there are many drivers of household affordability. And expenditures in areas such as housing, transportation, food, and healthcare are significant, as you can see by the two pie charts on this slide. Now, the pie chart on the left is the New York State average share of income spent on different categories, and to the right is the United States average. And what we can see is that household energy and transportation energy spending is represented in those light-colored blue and orange pie pieces that are sticking out, are important, but not primary drivers of affordability challenges relative to other areas of spending. Just to call out what some of those numbers say, New York households and US households spend about 2.5% of their income on household energy. And New York households spend about 1.8% on transportation energy, while US households spend about 2.9%. That leads to total household energy expenditures, household and transportation energy expenditures at 4.2% in New York State, relative to about 5.4% in the US average. So looking at kind of the breakout of those expenditures, the chart on the right, the stacked bar chart, kind of follows that color coding with household energy expenditures on the bottom, transportation energy expenditures on the top. And we can see that although energy prices are higher in New York State than they are in the US on average, average energy consumption is lower, which leads to lower combined household and transportation energy expenditures than the national average, as well as lower expenditures than the top outmigration states from New York. And to unpack that a little, we can see from that bar chart that lower transportation energy spending offsets slightly higher household energy spending in New York State. And, you know, on a statewide basis, New York State has the lowest household vehicle miles traveled and energy expenditures in the nation. But within New York State, we know we have regional variation. So transportation energy as a share of income is about 50% lower downstate than it is upstate, reflecting that lower reliance on driving downstate due to access to transit. And although we don't have population-level data on household energy expenditures available to us right now, we could suppose that if we were looking at that bar chart for upstate, it might look more like the US average. Next slide, please. Now, when we break this affordability metric out by income, we can see that across the US and across New York, low and moderate-income households are more likely to experience energy affordability challenges. So on average, expenditures and burdens follow an overall pattern of lower expenditures, but disproportionate burdens at lower incomes. You can see that from this chart here, where the darker columns are energy expenditures, and the lighter shaded columns are energy burdens. So you can see that when we look across all income quintiles, which is what this chart is showing, the five income quintiles, and US columns are on the left and New York State columns are on the right, that across all those income quintiles in expenditures and burdens, New York State comes in a little lower than the US average. But despite that, it's important to note that the trends are the same, whether you're looking at New York State or the US, where the lowest-income households often experience burdens that are many times the average income households or high-income households. And it's important to look beyond energy burden as well. So in addition to energy burden, lower-income and more vulnerable households, such as minorities, women, households with children, larger households and people with disabilities, experience energy insecurity at above-average rates. And when I talk about energy insecurity, I mean things like foregoing other expenses to pay for energy, keeping your home at an unsafe temperature, or getting behind on an energy bill. So important to establish this foundation as we pivot to looking at the forward-looking analysis. So next slide, please. So with that background, I'll walk through our analysis, which analyzes household energy and transportation energy expenditures for a variety of household profiles and journeys that are representative of the scenarios from the economy-wide pathways analysis that we just heard about. So our approach is designed to be consistent with that economy-wide analysis, which is the source of our technology characterization and adoption over time. We then supplement that with household-scale data, such as energy demand, transportation demand, and energy price projections, to produce our key output, which is household energy expenditures and transportation energy expenditures. Next slide, please. So we look at nine household profiles across three regions of New York. So we look at low-income, moderate-income, and average-income households for New York City, downstate, which includes Long Island and the Hudson Valley in our segmentation, and upstate, which is the rest of the state. Next slide, please. And for each household profile, we analyze future total energy expenditures for four journeys involving different technology mixes and fuel types, again, that are representative of the kinds of journeys a household might take through that economy-wide analysis. So on the left of this graphic, we can see that our journeys kind of span a continuum, where on the left, we see reliance on fossil fuel heating and transportation, and on the right, we see reliance on electric heating and transportation. And our journeys kind of span that continuum. So on the left, our starting-point journey involves fossil fuel heating and transportation with average existing equipment. So this is a journey that reflects a household that's holding on to their heating and cooling equipment, perhaps holding on to a vehicle over time. Our conventional replacement journey includes fossil fuel heating and transportation, but where households replace their equipment with new, more efficient equipment. So you might imagine replacing a vehicle, replacing a heating and or cooling system, replacing lighting systems and other appliances over time. Our two efficient electrification journeys, we have a moderate and a high-efficient electrification journey, both include building weatherization and efficiency retrofits, because we recognize that those elements are critical for realizing affordable operating costs. And our moderate efficient electrification journey involves some electrification of heating and transportation. For example, households utilize combustion backup heating systems in addition to heat pumps, as well as plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, and involve basic building envelope efficiency measures. While our high-efficient electrification journey involves more electrification of heating and transportation, and a higher degree of building envelope efficiency measure, as well as some additional efficient electric appliances for other non-heating end uses. And just to be clear, this is a high-level snapshot. A full matrix of assumptions will be available in the state energy plan that goes into great detail. Next slide, please. So this next slide is the first of three kind of results snapshots to get a sense of the dynamics of what our analysis shows for different household profiles. And now is a good time to include the caveat that these are modeled profiles. Real-world households may differ in terms of the levels of expenditures and savings that they might see. But these are representative models that are useful to understand some of these dynamics and look at these different household types with. So to orient you to this chart, what we're seeing is household energy expenditures and transportation energy expenditures for the four different journeys. Each column is a different journey. And the columns are broken out by fuel. So fuel oil is the cream-colored area on the bottom. Household electricity is the dark blue. Vehicle electricity is a light blue. And the pink at the top is gasoline. And we also include some arrows that call out and differentiate between transportation energy and household energy. And what we see, the first thing that jumps out when we look across profiles for this household, and I should say this is an upstate moderate-income household that utilizes heating oil for heating, is that from left to right, the total expenditures are going down across each of these profiles. What we can, what we take away from that is that upstate households that drive and heat with a delivered fuel like heating oil see savings in household energy expenditures from efficiency and further savings from efficient electrification. And they also see substantial reductions in transportation energy expenditures from fuel efficiency and even further reductions from electrification. Next slide, please. In this next slide, we see that same household, an upstate moderate-income household, but one that heats with natural gas instead of fuel oil, as represented by the bottom area of the bar chart. You can see it now brown instead of cream-colored, representing natural gas. And so what we see in this case is a little bit more nuanced, nuanced picture. This household would see energy savings from more, energy expenditure savings from more efficient appliances, but would see either an incremental increase or an incremental decrease with a heat pump, depending on the level of additional weatherization, building efficiency, and further appliance efficiency. And in this case, the transportation energy savings help to offset incremental cost increases from heating electrification that occur in some journeys. Next slide, please. And this next slide will shift the region from upstate to New York City, reflecting regional variation differentiation. And so in our New York City profile, again, a moderate-income profile, we see savings relative to the starting point across all cases, across all journeys. And since the New York City context is different than upstate, where approximately half the population primarily uses transit, it's particularly important to consider both the combined total expenditures, as well as just the household-only expenditures. So although we see cost declines from the starting point across journeys, we see conventional replacement come in slightly lower than moderate efficient electrification in terms of expenditures with or without the inclusion of transportation expenditures. And with this region's relatively higher electricity prices, we see the high-efficient electrification journey reach a similar level of savings as conventional replacement. So despite those higher electricity prices, we see kind of parity between high-efficient electrification and conventional replacement in terms of total expenditures. Next slide, please. So we've been focusing on operating costs, which we see in the graph on the left. Those should be the same as the previous, in the previous slides. But this slide brings in equipment costs, which are shown on top of the operating costs in the chart on the right. And what we see when we do this is that although energy expenditures decline across household profiles and journeys relative to the starting point for households pursuing efficient electrification, those households see net costs when including the upfront costs for vehicles, heating systems, efficient appliances, and building envelope measures. And so they see net costs of approximately 30% relative to conventional replacement. Next slide, please. So I walked through a representative snapshot of our findings, and the full set of results will be included in the state energy plan. But I do want to share some key takeaways. So across profiles and journeys, in real-dollar terms, households may see gradually declining rates of energy consumption and energy spending as more efficient equipment is adopted. For driving households, both conventional replacement and vehicle electrification can lower transportation energy spending relative to the starting point. And vehicle electrification can further reduce transportation energy spending relative to conventional replacement outside of New York City. Households well-served by transit, including in New York City, are able to keep overall energy costs lower than average by minimizing or avoiding transportation fuel expenditures. Households that heat with a delivered fuel such as heating oil can realize substantial savings from efficient electrification. For some households that use natural gas heating, household energy costs could increase with heat pump adoption alone. However, the combined impacts of heat pump adoption, building envelope efficiency, and more efficient lighting and appliances can lower household energy expenditures. And although households pursuing energy-efficient electrification may experience lower combined operating costs in some cases, analysis shows that these households would see net costs when including the combined upfront costs for vehicles, heating systems, efficient appliances, and building envelope measures. Next slide, please. So to wrap up and bring it all together, I want to offer four kind of high-level conclusions. Across New York, households face overarching affordability challenges. However, low and moderate-income households are more likely to experience energy affordability challenges. To understand how energy costs impact people, it's important to look comprehensively at both household energy and also transportation energy spending. Energy-saving measures, such as building envelope efficiency, efficient appliances and equipment, fuel-efficient and electric vehicles and transit use, can lower overall household energy costs. Many households pursuing these measures are likely to see net reductions in operating costs due to the combined impacts of a variety of efficiency measures, including efficient electrification, on household energy and transportation energy spending. And finally, policy and market solutions that focus on lowering upfront costs and other barriers to adoption for a range of energy efficiency measures have the potential to enable households to realize lower, more affordable operating costs. And this can in turn help to alleviate energy insecurity and energy burdens. Thank you, Carl. I'll pass it back to you.
Great, thank you, James, for that succinct and great summary. So as you said, you walked us through three different profiles, but we have maybe several dozen that are in the plan when we put out the draft. So if you didn't see, you know, the specific location households of your interests, it will be in the plan. And then as James mentioned, we've been focusing a lot of that talk on the operation costs, like what's a household spending each year? But then at the end, we kind of brought it together to say, what about the upfront costs, too? So with that, turn it over to the chair and to the members of the board who have any open questions. Do we have one over there?
Yeah, I was going to say, please.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you so much for the analysis. I did just have one question about how the model affects the change in utility rates and how you sort of built that in, and that goes across all different fuel types?
Yeah, so thanks for that question. So our current rate projections in this vintage of the analysis are trend-based, right? So we look at, for each fuel, including electricity and natural gas, past trends and project them forward. One of our plans between the draft and the final is to explore additional sensitivities in what those rates are, so we can look at a full range of uncertainty. So our draft assumptions are trend-based. We're looking at exploring additional sensitivities as well for the final.
Great question. Jess, did you have one? Jess, did you have one or?
Sure. Yeah. Thank you, James, for the really good presentation. The slides with the bar charts that show the split between transportation and household energy use, I think are really important. We typically talk about energy burdens focused on household use, but understand, you know, looking at the big picture, how that can add some value. My question on those slides are, in the assumptions behind the analysis, can you talk a little bit about how, you know, was that used based on New York State-specific data? And can you talk a little bit about what was built into those assumptions?
Yeah, sure. So there are a variety of assumptions that go into the analysis. And to start with one, so energy use. The energy use profiles that we use are drawn from underlying building system modeling that is kind of the same as some of the core inputs that go into the household profiles in the economy-wide analysis. So they reflect climate zone data from New York State, so we can ensure that energy services demand is, you know, consistent with our climate zones and our housing stock. So it's built on those kind of building simulations that are New York State-specific. Similarly, with transportation demand. We've built our transportation demand analysis on the National Household Transportation Survey, which, you know, includes income-specific, household-specific information on transportation demand per household. One important factor that, you know, I tried to emphasize throughout is that those bar charts that we showed are primarily for, they take as a starting point households who, whose primary transportation mode is driving. So one of the things that we want to make sure to emphasize in the chapter is that, you know, making sure households that drive experience energy affordability is very important, but also increasing access to transit and making sure we support transit users is also important. So one of the, we try to include both perspectives in the narrative in our chapter. Is there anything else that would make sense to highlight? There will be a very full appendix, but happy to address any specific input assumptions as well.
No, that's perfect, James. I really wanted to get out there, you know, that you guys did an incredible amount of work in really trying to make the analysis more New York State-specific. So it's not, you know, a snapshot nationwide. It really is trying to get to the core of what a New York State resident would experience throughout these different pathways. So I appreciate that.
Thanks so much.
And then just a final comment on the analysis, the conclusion slide. Looking at the bar chart where you had the two bar charts side by side and the discussion about how upfront costs may increase, you know, you know, what a customer feels on a monthly basis. Another, you know, conclusion one could draw is just that we have to be very sensitive to that when we think about the design of programs and, you know, continuing to focus on that target that we have for 6% energy burden, especially for low-income folks. So thank you.
Great. And thank you for also bringing up the issue that this is a bit of a paradigm shift of looking at the combined transportation and household energy expenses. And our typical mindset is only looking at what's the household within those four walls, and that's where that 6% comes from. So we, we're also proposing a slightly different way of even looking at the problem statement. So thanks for highlighting that.
I just have one other thing, and, you know, it may not be appropriate necessarily for this analysis, but, you know, thinking a little bit more on the state as to how we can create more incentives for landlords to pass on those savings to tenants is important. Because of course, mass transit is important. We do smart growth in our office, and that's a big focal point as part of the more global transition. But also, you know, just recognizing that we can pass on the savings to some and they can maintain those higher costs. I'm not sure that we really have built out all of those opportunities across multiple agencies, but I do think that that's something that we need to look at in our policies. Because asking whether or not you've done that sort of analysis doesn't necessarily mean that it will end up getting passed on. We don't necessarily have that level of control, so that really is more based on incentivizing.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, you know, I'll just point out that an eagle-eyed observer of our front slides relative to the analysis slides might notice that there are some differences in the dollar amounts when we look at population level data and our household profiles. And one key reason is because in our household analysis, you know, as an analytic construct, we're assuming a household pays for all of those, all of those fuels, right? And we know that that's not the case for every household. Many renters, you know, have certain fuels included in the rent, and that is reflected in the population level data at the outset. So it's something that we were definitely very mindful of as we developed this analysis, that there is such a wide variety among households in terms of what they experience and what they pay directly and, you know, what's included in those bills. So we want to make sure that our analysis is manageable, that we can actually do it, and we need to simplify some assumptions. But we're very conscious of the fact that, you know, there are more household experiences in reality than are what are specifically represented in the illustrious profiles that we've included. So thank you for that comment.
Yeah, and, you know, going, I guess, adding to Jessica Waldorf's comments, right? I think one of the challenge points there is, you know, the affordability and the spending, the energy affordability piece of it in higher density areas is different, especially from a transportation than maybe out into the rural areas. And so, you know, trying to even combine that, even though you did a great job focusing on numbers that reflect New York State, there's so much diversity within New York State. And again, from a policy development standpoint, we have to look at these things a bit more regionally and with regards to density and population, but thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Well, the team has promised many, many versions of this, so we'll see if they captured it all. Assemblymember Barrett, I saw you go off mute. Do you have a question or a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. And I do want to second what Keesha was just saying, but I was, you know, was kind of concerned about, I mean, I know the, addressing the fact that the upfront costs and replacement costs and heat pumps and new appliances is factored in now. But I, you know, I want to make sure that we are prepared to explain to people how they're going to meet those costs. Because, you know, the 6% aside, we have, as we've talked about many times, this, this layer of people who are, you know, one big appliance cost or one healthcare crisis or one new purchase away from being potentially equivalent to a low-income household, but they're not in any programs because, you know, they're, they're right above that. So I just want to make sure and understand what the thinking is and how that's going to be addressed going forward.
Yes, thank you for that question. What we, I think what we've tried to do in designing our household profiles is provide a diverse representation of different courses of action, including households that are not replacing equipment to illustrate what those costs are, and households who are not investing in in equipment that might cost more than a conventional device. So we have, we are trying to include a diversity of experience, but your point is well-taken in terms of the significance of that upfront cost, which we are ensuring will be included in all of our profiles, so.
Right. And I think it also helps to justify and explain why we have such strong programs in New York, like the Empower program and additional funding that's been going towards that. So I think this-
Well, but again, that, that only reaches a certain segment. And, you know, we tried this last time in the budget to hit that next tier, the, you know, with additional money. And, you know, the governor wasn't, governor wasn't interested in that. So, I mean, it, it's great to have programs and it's great for the ones that it impacts, but we have a lot of people for whom these programs are not reaching, and we're asking them to do the same kinds of upgrades and purchases. You know, that, that people who are getting government support and people who have more resources are expected to do. So I think we have to make sure that we're focused on them as well.
Yeah, that, I share that view, Assemblymember Barrett. I appreciate you bringing it up because as you've seen through this segment, we're taking an objective, clear-eyed look at the realities on the ground. And that's one of the reasons that I think this Energy Planning Board's work will be so effective in doing just that, helping us be objective about what it takes. And so we're, we're showing that there is a gap and not claiming that our funds are sufficient to fill that gap today, but rather to say this is not only what the cost would be, but also frankly, what the market scale would have to be, which is a different matter altogether in order to get from here to there. So thank you. And James, thanks, thanks for the analysis as a general matter. I must say, this has been eye-opening for me. Does anyone else have questions or comments?
Maybe just one final comment, building off of the discussion here. But the Assemblymember brings up a good point. I think another thing to keep in mind when looking at these numbers is we're not saying everything has to happen immediately. Choices take time, customers, you know, we've been doing energy efficiency work and steering customers to cleaner energy choices for decades. But I think that's all about the discussion that I hope comes across in the chapter of a managed and phased transition. And so, yes, we have programs. We have, you know, $5 billion recently authorized for energy efficiency that's targeted towards various customer classes. But the expectation isn't that everybody does it overnight, that it takes time to adopt these technologies. So just wanted to get that point across too.
Well, with my thanks, thank you both for those great presentations.
Yes, and thanks to the members for your feedback and questions. I am here to tell you, we are going to take a 10-minute break before we turn to the SEP topic areas that I had discussed at the beginning. Why don't we plan on 10 minutes? So we'll, we'll be back at 2:30-ish. Thank you again.
Good afternoon. Please take a seat. We're going to reconvene. Okay? Thank you.
after which the board will have an opportunity to ask questions. So first, I will ask Dave Cowp, Assistant Director on NYSERDA's Policy Analysis and Research Team, and Jessica Waldorf, Chief of Staff and Director of Policy Implementation at the Department of Public Service, to present on electricity. Following this, we will hear from Rob Haberman, Senior Advisor for Policy Implementation at DPS on the topic of nuclear energy. Third, we will hear from Seth Berkman, Senior Project Manager, and once again, Rob Haberman on the state's gas system. And finally, we'll hear from Nicole Karason, Program Manager on the Energy Markets Team at NYSERDA on petroleum and delivered fuels. So I will now hand the presentation over to Dave and Jessica to kick us off.
Thank you. So we can go to the next slide? And one more? So before digging into the details here, the electric chapter is a very comprehensive view of both, you know, current and future state of the electric sector, but also just want to thank the incredible team that contributed to this chapter, including Caroline Wolf, who is another co-lead on its development. The electric chapter focuses on the key theme of needing to have reliable power at reasonable rates, because it is the backbone of the state's economy and critical to our public health and safety. The chapter presents an overview of industry participants, regulatory oversight, the state of the sector, and a progress report that shows how electric usage, demand, and sales have changed over time. It also provides an overview of supply mix and transmission and distribution system components. It reviews the current requirements in law and regulation for the electric sector and all of the various programs and policies that are in place that drive changes in grid mix. These include things like the Clean Energy Standard, citing and permitting process changes enabled by the Rapid Act, the role of the coordinated grid planning process and the proactive planning proceeding, the NISO reliability planning processes, distributed energy resource development, as well as flexible resource development through the Grid of the Future proceeding, to name a few. The discussion is followed by an outlook section that describes various scenarios for how the electric grid may evolve over the next 15 years, factoring in future electric demand and resources that may be available to help meet it. It concludes by articulating six key findings, state actions, and related recommendations to address those findings, which we will go through in the next several slides. And throughout the chapter, on a high level, there's a recognition of how economic growth, changes in demand patterns, and evolving policies will continue to present challenges to the electric sector to manage the shift in supply and power delivery needs. We can go to the next slide? Continuing to support the development of large-scale and distributed energy resources is the first umbrella recommendation in this chapter. The chapter encourages continued development of distributed solar to achieve the state's 10-gigawatt goal and leveraging statewide solar for all to achieve additional megawatts of development while maximizing benefits to low-income consumers. The state will continue to work under the Clean Energy Standard to develop large-scale resources and leverage the directives from the recent Commission Order on the Clean Energy Standard Biennial Review, which includes a holistic review of current procurement practices to ensure the most efficient and cost-effective achievement of the state's clean energy targets. The chapter also highlights the benefits of leveraging the New York Power Authority's new statutory authority to build renewables in order to maximize development opportunities throughout New York State. Another directive from the recent Commission Order on the Biennial Review was to file a report on the implementation of clean energy zones. The chapter recognizes this and its potential to align generation and transmission development in key areas of the state in order to maximize the benefit to ratepayers and host communities. This and continued monitoring of the state's implementation of the Rapid Act are also key recommendations, in addition to continued support for workforce development to ensure that the state has the labor force that we need to develop and maintain these energy resources. The chapter also recognizes the need to continue evaluating what policies may be necessary to ensure the continued operation and deliverability of electricity into the state from some of our existing resources, including hydro, through things like the Large-Scale Renewable Energy Program and Clean Energy Standard, as well as the value of distributed energy resource proceedings, respectively. And we can go to, oh, and lastly, this section of the chapter also highlights the importance of the state needing to be mindful about managing the retirement of downstate units in a manner that won't cause air quality to worsen in disadvantaged communities and will not cause negative system reliability impacts. It also discusses a statutory requirement that the New York Power Authority has, and as part of that, the requirement to conduct an air emissions analysis prior to any retirement of these facilities. We can go to the next slide? The second category of recommendations is focused on harnessing the potential of energy storage and other demand-side resources in order to lower the cost of maintaining and enhancing grid reliability needs. The chapter highlights some of the ongoing efforts at the state, including the Grid of the Future proceeding, which is focused on the development of flexible resources, such as virtual power plants and the work that we have been doing for decades in investing in energy efficiency and demand response initiatives and the benefits that continued investments in those areas will have on individual consumer savings as well as system-wide energy cost savings. Energy storage is a key recommendation of this chapter, and the chapter recognizes that recent approvals by the Public Service Commission of NYSERDA's implementation plans for both bulk and retail energy storage programs have the opportunity to significantly increase deployment of these resources. The chapter also recognizes the need for New York to continue to be a leader in battery storage safety and the efforts to date that the state has made through the inter-agency fire safety working group. We can go to the next slide? The third recommendation centers on the need to identify and develop clean, firm resources to achieve the Climate Act's target of a zero emissions electric grid by 2040. The chapter recognizes the work that has occurred to date under the Public Service Commission Zero by Forty proceeding, including the Department of Public Services staff white paper released last fall that is pending PSC decision, and forthcoming techno-economic studies that will evaluate various technologies that may play a role in achieving this target. There is a recognition of the need to continue to support innovation and research programs and projects through efforts like the Clean Energy Fund's support for NYSERDA to do this work, as well as evaluating financial mechanisms to support the deployment of these resources. And before I turn it over to my colleague Dave, I'll say a very big theme throughout this chapter is focus on affordability in addition to reliability. And with that, Dave?
Thank you. Yeah, so building upon what Jess was saying is, you know, if we're going to be working towards achieving these goals that she was talking about, we're definitely going to need to be making investments in the transmission and distribution system. And we really need to continue to ensure that the state's planning processes are providing actionable information for decision-makers in this important area. Some areas that we talked about for recommendations in this space, I should maybe set the table a little bit, is right now we have a coordinated grid planning process, and that's really intended to further integrate and coordinate planning between the NISO, the Joint Utilities, and state agencies. That's in its first cycle right now. You know, we want to, of course, learn any lessons we can from the first cycle and, you know, continuously improve the process. Something in the same vein is that in CGPP, we're going to be looking to keep, find ways to coordinate our look at distribution and transmission solutions to problems, and also looking for opportunities to foster the adoption of more advanced transmission technologies like grid-forming inverters and synchronous condensers in that process. And finally, the idea of continuing to enhance our interregional coordination and cooperation with our neighbors in terms of planning is something we want to, of course, keep looking for ways to improve. DPS and NYSERDA will continue to engage in stakeholder dialogue when it comes to identifying and implementing technical and procedural improvements to the distributed energy resources interconnection process. Also, we didn't change the slide. Okay, thank you. Also, you know, when it comes to looking at cost allocation methods for these investments, we want to keep looking at, you know, other things beyond the traditional approaches that would make sense. Next is that, you know, we really need to pursue integrated electricity and natural gas system planning. You know, proactive, long-term, and integrated planning is needed to ensure efficient investment in the electric and natural gas systems and reduce the stranded asset risk, given the projected decline in the gas system usage. And the final item here is that the state should continue to evaluate ways to further coordinate storage and transmission solutions through CGPP and other planning processes. And the state should also support NISO and the completion of its storage as transmission project here in 2025. Next slide, please. On the retail side, we want to examine the role of electricity rates and program incentives to enable deployment of distributed energy resources and flexible resources. The Grid of the Future, as Jess had mentioned earlier, is proceeding for the, it really serves as the forum for development of additional incentive mechanisms. But we also want to take a look on the rate side, for instance. Take a look at the LIPA default time-of-use program and see how that's going, see if there's anything we can learn from it, see if it's applicable, adaptable, adaptable for other parts of the state as well. And then finally, DPS should continue to evaluate the VETER compensation method to ensure it's accurately reflecting the value provided by DERs, and that reflects the avoided costs that the local utility is paying for the credits. We'll go on to the final slide. And two points to be made here, though the high-level point is our future investments in our energy systems really need to be designed to withstand the impacts of climate change. Today, we have a really good set of metrics and criteria or reliability. And what we want to keep an eye out for as we move forward, again, in this transition, to have different kinds of resources and more volatility and the climate, which can impact demand, is to look at other metrics like expected unserved energy, and there's others. But, you know, take a look at, see if there's other metrics, and then maybe subsequently criteria for them that can round out and enhance what we're already doing today. Because like UE can tell you more information about, for instance, the risk of long-duration outages and how much energy might not be served under those circumstances. Finally, we already have planning processes that are scenario-based, which is great. Some of them have the opportunity, as we go forward, to fold in the impacts of climate on the load forecast that they're using. And I'll leave it at that. I'm done. We're not doing questions right now, right? We're continuing through the slides?
That's correct. We're moving on to the nuclear presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. And thank you Chair Harris and the planning board. I'll be presenting the key findings for the nuclear chapter in the draft state energy plan. And I'd also like to thank Elise Peterson and Kim Burtabier at NYSERDA as co-leads on this chapter. Next slide, please. So this chapter presents an overview of the existing nuclear facilities in New York State, the regulatory regime that exists around these facilities, and the outlook for and regulatory considerations of advanced nuclear development. The top-line finding in the draft chapter is that nuclear energy is provided reliable and zero-emission electricity to the state's energy system for decades provides unique benefits that align with the scale of emerging needs and is entering a new phase of technological advancement and deployment opportunities. Next slide. So there are currently four operating commercial nuclear power plants in New York State: Fitzpatrick, Gannay, Nine Mile Point Unit 1, and Nine Mile Point Unit 2. Together, these facilities are responsible for about 20% of New York's electrical supply and provide thousands of in-state jobs and significant local and regional economic benefits. The nuclear plants notably also hold the highest capacity factor, about 98% in 2024, compared to other power generation in the state. As we have seen in the pathways analysis, with expected load growth and ongoing decarbonization of the electricity mix, the state will need about 20 gigawatts of dispatchable emissions-free generation by 2040. So while advanced nuclear technologies are rapidly emerging with enhanced design, operational, and safety features, most of these technologies have not yet been deployed, resulting in uncertainty on cost and timelines for first-of-a-kind deployment. Next slide, please. The Zero Emission Credit Program, or ZEC program, established in 2016 with the Public Service Commission's order adopting a Clean Energy Standard, provides a credit to existing nuclear facilities for their zero-emission environmental attributes to enable their continued operation. The ZEC program expires in March 2029, the same year that operating licenses of Nine Mile Point Unit 1 and Gannay are due for renewal. So we recommend here evaluating the extension of the ZEC program prior to any federal relicensing application deadlines, which happened in early 2026, to ensure the continued operation of the existing fleet from 60 to 80 years to meet the CLCPA's zero-emission by 2040 target. And consistent with the state's interest in affordability and reliability, any extension should be done with ratepayer protection in mind, in addition to the reliability needs of the grid. Next slide, please. On this side, we recommend an in-depth examination of key considerations for advanced nuclear And to achieve economies of scale and de-risk nuclear development, the state should pursue opportunities to partner with other states to build out an advanced nuclear reactor order book to help de-risk and lower the cost of new reactors. This would increase the number of orders for select reactor designs that may help vendors and achieve economies of scale while reducing capital costs to developers. The state should also look to build out with other states' supply chain for construction of new reactors and the workforce needed to construct and operate new reactors. For example, two existing initiatives co-chaired by NYSERTA include the Nasio-Nayruch Advanced Nuclear State Collaborative, which has 32 member states, and it seeks to convene state officials to share information related to planning and deployment of new advanced nuclear. There's also the partnership between Nasio and the DOE, Part of Energy, to form the Advanced Nuclear First Movers Initiative, focused on risk sharing, driving down costs and accelerating market adoption. Next slide, please. The state's zero emission by 2040 target is urgent and development timelines for nuclear projects can be long. So nuclear projects require significant early development efforts, critical to prepare the way for deployment. Therefore, we recommend the state pursue opportunities for early deployment action in parallel with ongoing initiatives. Early development efforts must prioritize affordability for energy consumers and minimize financial and other risks to the state. Early deployment action should also be undertaken in coordination with the master plan, process and in collaboration with other states when possible. And as we heard about earlier, one such potential early deployment action is underway with the Governor's Directive to NIPA in coordination with the Department of Public Service to develop one or more nuclear facilities capable of producing at least a gigawatt of electricity. And at that, I'll take a pause and I'll turn it to Seth.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Chair Harris, and thank you to the Planning Board for the opportunity to share key findings from the draft state energy plan for the natural gas sector. We'll jump right in. Next slide, please. Natural gas is one of the most important fuels used by New York residents and businesses to meet their energy needs. In 2022, natural gas accounted for 39% of New York's primary energy consumption. Natural gas is used in residential and commercial buildings for space heating, water heating and cooking, for electricity generation, to support industrial processes and for other uses. As we'll discuss, we're entering a transitional period for the natural gas sector, which will require strategic planning and thoughtful policymaking to ensure New York's energy needs continue to be met safely, reliably, affordably, and in a way that supports the achievement of broader state policy goals. While New York's natural gas consumption is expected to decline over time, the natural gas system will remain essential for serving New York's energy needs under all scenarios throughout the SEP planning horizon. Next slide, please. Gas planners must continue to ensure safety and reliability by proactively addressing existing and emerging risks. New York already has a robust multi-stakeholder approach for managing gas system reliability, which includes advanced winter preparedness planning, intra- and interstate emergency response coordination, regulations to ensure safe installation and operation of pipelines, and assessments of how utilities can harden their systems to threats posed by climate change. Notably, New York receives a substantial majority of its natural gas supply from imports through interstate pipelines and parts of New York, especially downstate, operate under constrained supply. As such, extreme weather events that impact upstream sources of gas supply like Winterstorm Elliott have the potential to threaten gas reliability here in New York. So it's essential that gas transmission operators, utilities and the state continue to plan for a reliable and resilient gas system through strategies like maintaining a diverse supply portfolio and demand management. Next slide, please. Gas planning and investment standards need to be evaluated to ensure that they maintain reliability while protecting affordability as the climate and patterns of consumer demand change. Gas utilities ensure their systems can meet peak demand for a design day, which typically reflects the coldest weather historically experienced in a utility's service territory. This design day standard has helped ensure a very reliable gas system in New York. Design day demand can be influenced both by shifting patterns of customer usage from electrification and energy efficiency and from a warming climate. So utilities should evaluate whether their planning standards properly balance reliability and ratepayer costs using the best available climate science and data on customer usage. In addition, when evaluating investment in new gas supply infrastructure, the state should consider the potential to reduce vulnerability to upstream supply disruptions. Next slide, please. As noted before, while there may be some regional variability and localized near-term growth, natural gas use is expected to decline over time, over the long term, due to state policy and shifting customer preferences towards cleaner alternatives. This decline would constitute a significant shift from the historic trend of growing natural gas use over the past several decades in New York. The state must plan for this shifting landscape through programs, policies and regulations that reduce greenhouse gas emissions while ensuring that New Yorkers have access to safe, reliable and affordable energy. Next slide. The projected decline in gas system use poses challenges to energy affordability that must be proactively addressed through long-term and integrated planning. Fundamentally, if gas system use declines but investment in the system does not, energy prices can increase, driving up bills for customers that continue to use gas. So to maintain affordability and to reduce stranded asset risk, utilities must invest efficiently, including in non-pipe alternatives or NPAs and demand management. The state is already making progress on these fronts, especially through the long-term gas planning proceeding, but there's need for continued progress. We recommend that gas utilities be required to identify areas where their distribution systems will be necessary in the long term and prioritize investment in those areas. We recommend that the gas and electric utilities conduct infrastructure planning on a more integrated basis to optimize energy system investment. And we recommend that utilities continue to prioritize investments in NPAs such as targeted electrification and efficiency, as well as lower-cost alternatives to pipe replacement like repair and relining. Given limited experience with integrated planning and limited deployment of NPAs to date, enhanced planning practices, data sets and analytical tools will need to be developed to ensure investments in the overall energy system are as efficient as possible. And the state should help support the development of those tools. I'll turn it back to Rob to continue on the gas chapter.
Okay, I'm back. So new approaches may be needed to give the commission and gas utilities greater flexibility to proactively plan for a safe and strategic reduction in gas investments as customers adopt efficiency and electrification measures. If customer accounts begin to decline, limits on the commission's ability to direct and manage the gas system transition could create long-term affordability risks for customers. For instance, gas utilities' obligation to provide gas service to all customers who request it make it challenging to proactively plan at neighborhood scale or to implement non-pipe alternatives to avoid pipeline replacements. Therefore, we recommend the state continues to evaluate and develop policies that enable the commission to strategically manage gas system affordability. Next slide. So innovative cost recovery practices may also be needed to support the operational viability of gas utilities, ensure affordability and improve alignment between cost causation and cost allocation. Several gas utility long-term plans filed with the commission have identified scenarios in which customer count and throughput are forecasted to decline faster than annual utility revenue requirements. This results in rising gas unit costs and could compromise energy affordability with customers that have substantial gas demand. We recommend research into innovative cost recovery practices such as accelerated depreciation, changes to rate design, securitization and cost sharing, and to evaluate the potential risks and benefits of these approaches. And I'll note, this is not a recommendation for any specific cost recovery practice, but the development of a framework for further discussion and refinement that begins to identify what equitable cost recovery pathways to pursue under different gas system futures. Next slide. So we'll hear more about alternative fuels in a later discussion today, but for purposes of the gas system, we find that their use must be implemented strategically. Renewable natural gas, RNG, can reduce emissions in the gas system but should be sourced from sustainable feedstocks and deployed to difficult to electrify end uses. We find that hydrogen should not be blended into the broader natural gas distribution system currently, given the safety, affordability and operational challenges. And we find that certified gas, that is, gas products that claim to have lower upstream methane emissions based on their supply source, should not be differentiated in the state's annual GHG inventory, nor should the state currently accept such claims of lower upstream emissions. But we do recognize that the state should continue monitoring developments in this field over time. Next slide. So a common and important theme you'll see throughout the state energy plan is the necessity of a just transition for workers and businesses. We recommend here that the state work closely with utilities and labor organizations to ensure gas sector workers have access to economic opportunities throughout the clean energy transition. And furthermore, we recommend that the state researches the employment impacts of the clean energy transition of fossil fuel workers, including in the gas sector, to support the development of just transition policies. Next slide. And the gas transition must also be strategically managed to ensure that disadvantaged communities have equitable access to clean energy and are not unduly burdened financially. An unmanaged natural gas system transition poses health, affordability and equity risks to disadvantaged communities. So we recommend the state adopt clean energy program design elements to ensure disadvantaged communities and low-to-moderate income customers have access to clean energy upgrades. And we recommend the commission should direct gas utilities to explore and pilot community-scale heat planning in the context of future gas utility long-term plans. Next slide. And finally, the challenges facing the gas sector over the coming decades necessitate the development of a strategic gas system transition plan. In other words, new approaches may be needed to give the commission and gas utilities greater flexibility to plan for the safe, strategic reduction in gas system investments. So we recommend that the state works collaboratively with one or more utilities and other key gas sector stakeholders to develop such a plan to be published with the next state energy plan update that sets utility-specific targets and evaluates changes to the utility policy, investment, planning and cost recovery mechanisms. Thereafter, we recommend that the state leverage the lessons from this initial study to develop a statewide strategic gas system transition plan with all the other New York utilities. I'll stop there and I'll turn it to Nicole. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to present to the Energy Planning Board. And a special thanks to the co-authors of this chapter, specifically Joe Oso. So I will walk through a high-level summary of the key takeaways from the petroleum fuels section of the state energy plan. Next slide, please. So petroleum fuels are fossil fuels that are commonly referred to as delivered fuels, and these are products that are refined from crude oil. So petroleum fuel consumption has declined over the past 15 years. But despite this, it continues to make up roughly 36% of primary energy consumption as of 2022. So New York State utilizes a variety of petroleum products across different sectors. The most commonly used products are distillates, which consist of heating oil and distillate products. In addition to this, motor gasoline, aviation fuel and propane are also used in the state. In addition to the end uses of petroleum, the fuel is used to generate electricity. So petroleum serves as a backup fuel for power generation during the winter season. So this is when dual fuel generators are, must switch from natural gas to fuel oil, typically during those cold days in the winter and in order to relieve strain on the gas system. So this highlights the significance of petroleum fuels for maintaining grid reliability. Next slide, please. So this is a graphic of the petroleum supply chain framework for North America. And I won't spend an incredible time on this diagram, but mainly want to highlight the areas where New York State fits in to this framework. So upstream is the production and manufacturing of petroleum fuels, and then there's the distribution and consumption, which is downstream. So petroleum fuels have an extensive infrastructure network and New York State relies on some of these products. We have a minimal capacity for oil production in the state and absolutely no refinery capabilities. So it does make the import importing these fuels essential to meet in-state demand for these products. So products are imported via pipeline, rail and barge. So New York Harbor is a major delivery point for international deliveries of petroleum products such as heating oil, propane and other fuels. In addition to New York Harbor, the downstate, where we also receive products via pipeline to bulk terminal facilities. Some of these products are transported via barge up to the Hudson Valley and capital regions. In Western New York, these regions, these areas are supplied products via pipeline and further up north in the North Country, where infrastructure for pipeline deliveries is strained, they rely on truck deliveries from the capital region, Canada and elsewhere. So these terminal facilities that receive these products before they're transported to retailers and end users do play an important role in the supply chain and are essential to ensuring reliability. Next slide, please. So understanding will be important to think about in terms of recommendations for this sector. We want to continue to ensure the operation of the petroleum fuel sector through the state energy transition to cleaner fuels. So resilience and reliability will be a top priority. Monitoring the existing infrastructure for supply inventory of key fuels will be necessary. So some of those recommendations are required reporting of petroleum fuel inventories by bulk terminal operators to NYSERTA, DEC and the Department of Agriculture. This will allow for the tracking of supply resources to better understand resource needs and to evaluate the growing volume of alternative fuels. In addition to this, market monitoring in the petroleum markets will be necessary and reporting information regularly will be important. So NYSERTA, as a harmless plug, we do release a weekly public market intelligence report that does cover petroleum fuel inventories and prices, although this is on a regional basis. So having more granular data will be helpful for monitoring the existing system. Next slide, please. And in addition to monitoring the existing system and providing a mechanism for regular reporting, we can also explore new approaches to support the production and the delivery of alternative fuels. So existing policy to integrate alternative fuels and the energy supply stack is led by the statewide bio blending requirement, which does require all heating oils sold in the state to contain a 5% blend of biodiesel. So additional policies such as this will need to be flexible in order to ensure integration of alternative fuels. And another key point to consider is the developing ways to leverage existing infrastructure. So we can consider that through infrastructure investments, research, development and deployment of alternative fuels. And I will turn it back over to Dori. Thank you.
Thank you all for the presentations. I really appreciate each of your expert input. I'll be interested to see if any members have have questions. I think I'd like to highlight one particular point just to make sure that we're all aware. Maybe this is some combination Nick of you in the in the gas presentation, but but how does the state energy plan with respect to gas planning differ from typical utility planning? We mentioned sort of overarching themes on gas, you know, the need for gas. However, how how should we as the Energy Planning Board think about this as compared to the very regional needs that may exist outside of the trends that that we we are monitoring and planning for as on a statewide basis?
Thanks for the question. I'm happy to take a first stab and then I'll turn it to Nick or Seth if they have anything to add. But the state energy plan draft chapter is a set of policy recommendations that would be directive to the utilities, to the state energy agencies, to effectuate policy goals of the state. Utility gas planning happens where there's a lot of capital investment choices made. So they're going to actually bring capital investment proposals to the commission for approval. That's a bit outside the scope, although they're intertwined here with the policy recommendations. Bring it to Seth if he has anything more to.
Yeah, one thing that is distinct between the state energy planning approach
Yeah, one thing that is distinct between the state energy planning approach to long-term planning from the utility long-term plans is this is really done on an economy-wide basis. So the state energy plan, by nature of the analysis that informs the policy recommendations and the scenario design, looks across sectors: electricity, transportation, gas, of course, as well, to inform types of policy recommendations we have. There are some similarities as well with the long-term planning approach that the gas utilities do. So like the long-term gas plans that the utilities have presented in the long-term planning proceeding, we take a scenario modeling, or not modeling, but analysis approach, looking at different scenarios and what the implications are for the sector. And from both the economy-wide perspective, as well as the different scenarios that we look at, come to a set of policy recommendations about how we can advance towards the state's goals on efficient gas system planning, non-pipeline alternatives, and ensuring a safe and reliable and affordable gas system. Anything to add, Nick?
Yeah, maybe not too much to add. I think, Seth, you made a really good point. In terms of our analytic toolkit, we do look at similar things in terms of customer accounts and projected throughput under a different set of scenarios. And I will note that the utilities have more granular understanding of their local needs than what's captured in our modeling tools. And that's why when we looked at our analysis, did want to sort of look at the projections from the long-term plans as well, and recognize that there could be additional layers of information from some of the local granular modeling that utilities are able to do.
Thank you. Other questions from the members?
No question, Doreen, but just thanks. That's a lot of information. Look forward to diving into it more, but great work, team.
Thank you. Yes, thank you all. I'm sure there's many, many hours and pages behind this, so thank you for the detailed overview of the draft that we'll soon be seeing. Okay, now we're going to move to our last section of presentations. We do have two presentations, after which we will have an opportunity for questions and before we conclude the meeting. First, we have Macy Testani, Senior Project Manager on NYSERTA's Policy Development Team, to present on alternative fuels. And then we'll hear from Leslie Green, Project Manager at NYSERTA from the Policy Development Team, and Kawe, NYSERTA's Director of Strategy and Planning, who will present on buildings. Over to you, Macy. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harris. The purpose of this presentation and of the chapter itself, up next slide, please. The purpose of this--
Macy, just get the mic closer to your mouth.
Sorry.
No worries. Thank you.
Is that good? Okay. The purpose of this presentation and of the chapter itself is to clarify and further explore how the state considers emissions from alternative fuels and how alternative fuels could fit into our energy future. First, low-carbon alternative fuels are an important complement to electrification in the state's clean energy transition strategy. Electrification and zero emissions technologies will remain the first energy transition solutions, as these typically have greater health and decarbonization benefits in the long term and typically at a lesser cost. And in addition, alternative fuels will be of limited supply. Low-carbon alternative fuels should therefore be directed towards end uses in such a way that maximizes greenhouse gas emissions reductions while minimizing cost and environmental impacts and avoiding impacts associated with co-pollutant emissions. Analysis shows that the primary targets for alternative fuel use will be supplemental heating and difficult-to-electrify end uses such as industrial processes, long-distance aviation, submedium and heavy-duty transportation, and limited power generation. Next slide, please. So first, alternative fuels should be carefully managed to realize greenhouse gas emissions reductions. And the emissions from alternative fuels are considered in two different frameworks, and stick with me here, guys. So first, the first framework is life cycle analysis, which looks at global greenhouse gas emissions from land use change, feedstock production processing, fuel production transport, and as well as biogenic combustion. So essentially, all emissions associated with the alternative fuel, and it considers biogenic combustion as carbon neutral. The next framework in New York State is, of course, the Climate Act accounting. And under gross Climate Act accounting, there's two different additional considerations for alternative fuels. First is fuels that are produced out of state. Under Climate Act accounting, out-of-state emissions associated with the production and transport of fossil fuels must be considered under our accounting. However, this is not the case for alternative fuels. So Climate Act accounting does not consider land use, feedstock production processing, and fuel production transport before the fuel enters New York State borders. And under gross accounting, we do consider the emissions from biogenic combustion. This is different for in-state fuel production, so fuels produced, alternative fuels produced within the state, we would include all emissions from feedstock production, processing, fuel production, and transport, and again, as well as biogenic combustion. However, under gross accounting, we do not consider land use emissions for alternative fuels. Next slide, please. Both frameworks will have an important role in policymaking in New York State. Life cycle analysis can be used to differentiate between feedstocks, fuels, and end uses, as to which may yield greater global greenhouse gas emissions reductions, and to calculate emissions reductions from current business-as-usual and alternative fuel production for specific projects. And life cycle analysis can be used in programmatic or policy design within the state. And in addition, life cycle analysis should be applied to specific alternative fuels being considered for use to ensure the specific production pathway for that alternative fuel is consistent with New York State and Climate Act principles. Climate Act accounting determines the amount of greenhouse gas emissions reductions from alternative fuel use in New York State and the progress towards the emissions reduction requirements as set forth in the Climate Act. Climate Act accounting will be used to inform the statewide greenhouse gas emissions report and any greenhouse gas emissions claim made by entities within the state, such as individual facilities or utilities. And like LCA, can have a role in policies, programs, or regulations implemented by the state. Next slide, please. So the figure on the right shows how these different frameworks can be applied to alternative fuels. We're using renewable natural gas here as the example, but in the energy plan, we'll look at other fuels as well. The yellow diamond, I know it's hard to see, I apologize, is for the life cycle analysis. So again, including all emissions from the alternative fuel. The orange square is representative of fuels produced within the state, and the pink square is representative of out-of-state emissions or fuel production. So the life cycle accounting, again, all emissions associated with the alternative fuel, you can see from RNG, it counts for significant avoided emissions from the waste streams. And this is similarly captured in the in-state accounting in the orange square. However, for the out-of-state emissions, again, fuels were not accounting for the emissions from the production or transport out of the state borders. This would be similar to other jurisdictions and how they consider in their emissions accounting. However, we can see that the Climate Act accounting can create an incomplete picture of the emissions from the alternative fuel use that we can see in the life cycle analysis. And for life cycle analysis across all fuels, we see that waste-based feedstocks maximize our greenhouse gas emissions reductions. And in-state sourcing for these feedstocks is preferred to maximize local greenhouse gas emissions reductions. We could also potentially see other benefits, such as waste management, emissions reductions locally, as well as from that waste management, economic development opportunities, leakage avoidance, and supply security. And however, recognizing the supply limitations, the state remains open to regionally sourced and other low-impact feedstocks to advance global greenhouse gas reduction and climate change mitigation. Next slide. Looking at specific fuels for renewable natural gas, we see that renewable natural gas reduces greenhouse gas emissions across all feedstocks, especially for waste-based feedstocks. And in-state waste-based RNG provides substantial inventory benefits under our Climate Act accounting. For renewable diesel, both life cycle analysis and Climate Act accounting indicate lower benefits from the use of liquid fuels than RNG, as there are no lower avoided emissions. But life cycle analysis continues to show meaningful global climate benefits, especially from waste-based fuels. For sustainable aviation fuel, or SAF, SAF provides a variety of unambiguous benefits, including to public health in and around airport locations, and to the energy transition in a sector where alternative technologies are very limited for long-distance aviation. As a result, the state recommends that we should adopt a more expansive approach to SAF sourcing to avoid erecting burdens and restrictions to deployment. And for hydrogen, based on currently available technologies, New York State is focused on hydrogen produced both in and out of state that's using clean energy, and New York State will continue to assess new technologies for hydrogen production as they become available. And as mentioned previously in the gas presentation, at this time, New York State does not support blending of hydrogen into the natural gas infrastructure. There's a very detailed analysis that examines the co-pollutant impacts of alternative fuels that will be available with the state energy plan for public review, but it shows that alternative fuels typically have equal or lesser net co-pollutant emissions compared to their fossil fuel counterparts. Next slide, please. In addition, it is important to accurately and robustly track and account for the fuels and associated emissions as they move from production, both in or out of state, to the end use to ensure actual emissions reductions. To do so, we must balance integrity and credibility of emissions reduction claims and the administrative burden associated with the tracking system to ensure emissions reductions and to accelerate alternative fuel deployment. The delivery of fuels to New York State for use within the state is of critical importance, and we should avoid preventing and avoiding double counting of emissions reductions where possible. Therefore, there must be a clear physical and contractual path linking alternative fuel production to its end use. But in order to avoid costly new dedicated infrastructure and deliver alternative fuels to where they are needed most, alternative fuels will need to be produced and used within the existing energy system for transportation, storage, et cetera. And if an attribute tracking system is adopted by the state, it should reflect this priority. Therefore, for an attribute tracking system, a mass balance approach to fuels tracking is preferred, which supports regional sourcing as well as local benefits and allows alternative fuels to leverage the existing infrastructure. And with that, thank you.
I'm sure everyone's stuck with Macy for that. Thank you, Macy. Over to you, Leslie.
Thank you, Macy. And thank you, Chair Harris, and members of the board. We can move to the next slide, please. So modernizing and decarbonizing buildings will deliver comfort, health, and safety, climate resiliency, and economic benefits to New Yorkers. Notably, the energy transition highlights the opportunity for us to invest in and expand access to quality housing, with a focus on supporting low- and moderate-income households and residents in disadvantaged communities. Next slide, please. To support these goals, as well as broader objectives of prioritizing affordability and supporting reliability of our energy systems, we will discuss five main strategies for the building sector. These are prioritizing energy efficiency and weatherization, advancing efficient electrification, continuing innovation and market development, enabling demand management and load flexibility at scale, and reducing embodied greenhouse gas and refrigerant emissions. Next slide, please. For existing buildings, a phased approach to capital improvements is an effective way to manage the associated cost and disruption of energy upgrades. For large buildings, resource-efficient decarbonization, as illustrated in the graphics shown here, provides a repeatable and phased process to help buildings undertake the most cost-effective measures first, including increasing operational efficiencies, utilizing waste heat, and reducing the need for oversized thermal electric energy systems. A similar approach can be taken in smaller homes and buildings by weatherizing to improve comfort and reduce heating and cooling costs, and upgrading to energy-efficient and electric appliances as old ones become due for replacement. Next slide, please. So energy efficiency and decarbonization deliver significant value to building owners and occupants, but upfront and operating cost barriers persist. To advance energy upgrades in existing buildings, financial incentives and affordable financing will continue to be needed. The state should continue to offer financial incentives that support strategic decarbonization and that are tailored by market segment, prioritizing support for energy upgrades that are likely to deliver both energy and cost savings. This means prioritizing energy efficiency, weatherization, and other load reduction measures. Then in electrification programs, outreach in the near term should focus on replacing oil, propane, or electric resistance heating with efficient heat pumps, while also helping to make the switch from gas financially viable as those systems come due for replacement. The state should also continue to expand access to affordable financing programs and ensure the efficient and effective rollout of a three-part rate design that's been adopted by the PSC under its standby rate proceeding. Next slide, please. The cost of energy upgrades, as well as energy and housing costs in general, are acute challenges for LMI households and residents in disadvantaged communities, and should therefore be a priority for state support. State and utility programs supporting energy upgrades in LMI housing should focus on weatherization in the near term to reduce load and support energy affordability. An efficiency first should be taken to electrification, where energy efficiency and load reduction measures are required to be completed prior to or in conjunction with a heat pump installation. Additional funding will need to be identified to support both structural and energy upgrades in LMI housing, and state agencies and partners should continue efforts to coordinate and streamline access across housing and energy programs. Next slide, please. Additionally, for LMI customers, New York should consider opportunities to expand or modify energy bill assistance. This should include expanding opportunities to participate in community solar, which provides electric bill savings to income-eligible households, as well as more broadly continuing to support opportunities to pair electrification with solar benefits. The state should also consider updates to policies that enable equitable electrification and regulated affordable housing. Next slide, please. The state will need to continue support that helps develop and grow the market for clean and efficient building equipment. This should include providing residents and building owners with actionable information on how to pursue cost-effective energy efficiency and decarbonization upgrades, such as through free audits for single-family homes and small businesses, and technical assistance and energy planning services for larger, more complex buildings. The state should continue to engage key weatherization and heat pump supply chain actors, including manufacturers, distributors, and contractors, in order to streamline delivery of weatherization and heat pumps, build confidence in clean heating and cooling products, and improve the availability of both residential and larger-scale heat pumps, which could include exploring providing incentives to local distributors to help them stock a broader range of efficient heat pumps. Additionally, the state will need to continue its efforts to support workforce development and training in order to grow a skilled buildings workforce. And we can move to the next slide, and we'll pass the mic to Kawe.
Thank you, Leslie. So the technologies we have today are not necessarily the technologies we will have in the future. It's an important reminder that innovation and market transformation is still necessary to help expand decarbonization solutions across various building types. Public investments coordinated with strategic public-private partnerships are critical to spur innovation and commercialization, to help bring emerging solutions to the market and lower costs. Continued state support for innovation and demonstration activities is particularly important, focusing around drop-in solutions that can be installed more affordably with minimal needs for additional building or electric service upgrades. State investments and partnerships should also help to accelerate technology transfer, product testing, and support development of growth-stage companies and capital partners that are working to scale clean energy solutions and new business models. Next slide, please. So decarbonizing the building sector will require moving from building-by-building solutions to neighborhood-scale and community-based efforts. This will require coordinated effort, including integrated gas system and electric planning, as was discussed by some of the other presentations today, as well as network solutions, including thermal energy networks, or TENS. So for this emerging area, a TENS roadmap for New York State will be incredibly valuable to help identify the key market barriers that must be overcome, and what those solution sets could be to support broader TENS development in New York State. Additionally, it is important that the state continue to work on developing a clear regulatory framework to provide projects with certainty as they move forward. Finally, the state should advance various analyses in this area, including improving access to thermal resource data, how to value the energy system benefits of networks and thermal storage in comparison to other solutions. Next slide. To help further advance thermal energy networks, the state should also support communities with technical assistance, training, resources, and capacity building to help them be able to understand and consider TENS in the local planning context, as well as in the context of redevelopment efforts, including how to identify high-potential locations and build local support. New York will also need to explore how to provide sustained funding, both for public TENS, as well as potential mechanisms to help reduce the risks for private thermal energy network projects. Next slide. We also heard about this in the electricity chapter, but there's definitely a need to expand mechanisms to further integrate and monetize flexible equipment loads that can help manage operating costs, optimize grid investments, and maintain grid help manage operating costs, optimize grid investments, and maintain grid reliability. So to help advance this, the state should continue to develop product standards that enable flexible load capabilities in equipment such as HVAC thermosets, as well as other areas such as water heaters. New York should also consider opportunities to expand utility demand response programs, adapting them to enable more mass market participation and support load flexibility at scale. Next slide. So regulatory frameworks continue to be important in driving broad and sustained improvements, especially in building energy performance, and ultimately to reduce emissions from building operations and equipment. So beginning in 2026, the statewide zero emissions new construction codes will begin to going into effect. To ensure that these are successfully implemented, the state will play an important role in supporting local capacity building and education around these requirements, as well as overseeing enforcement by helping monitor compliance rate and market trends and offering technical assistance. As part of the regular cycle to update these codes, New York should continue to evaluate opportunities to further reduce energy use intensity, as well as continuing to evolve product and appliance standards to improve energy performance, as well as integrate demand response capabilities as appropriate. Next slide. Lessening the environmental impact of the building sector further requires us to manage refrigerants as well as embodied greenhouse gas emissions. So federal and state policies have set requirements and timelines for the use of low and ultra-low GWP refrigerants. State action should help support the rollout of these regulations through trainings and certification on the proper use and storage of refrigerants, as well as best practices regarding leak detection and reclamation. The state should also help to advance research and demonstration of compliant options while continuing to ensure that other regulatory requirements, such as codes, incorporate and reflect these technologies. In terms of embodied greenhouse gas emissions, New York should advance partnerships with other states to help build the market for low-carbon construction materials. And embodied emissions considerations could also be further integrated into programs that are bringing awareness to sustainable building practices. Next and final slide. And of course, throughout all of these actions, it is important to recognize that buildings across the state are potentially vulnerable to the impacts of climate change, that it is just as important to ensure that the equipment and investments that we make in our buildings will, will last for their expected useful lives. Accordingly, design and investment decisions must account for the long-term impacts of climate risk, since some specific approaches that can be taken include pairing resiliency measures, such as backup battery energy storage, with energy efficiency and weatherization, to help both reduce how much energy is consumed and therefore how much energy could, needs to be potentially backed up. The state should also consider piloting a resiliency-first energy storage incentive for public sector facilities. So this wraps up our presentation for today, and we thank Chair Harris, the board, and everyone else for their time.
Thank you, Macy, Leslie, and Kawe. What questions or comments may come from the board?
Doreen, thank you. So just a comment, really, and, and maybe it's an obvious observation for some people. You know, this has been a really long discussion, but the content and, and the analysis that was done for these recommendations is really impressive, I think. So I want to thank everybody for that. One of the things which I think we need to be mindful of as we move forward, and I think it was useful to present all of these together today, is none of these chapters can stand on their own, right? They're all so tightly integrated with each other. I think Seth touched on the interdependency between the gas system and the electric system, and managing that carefully through the transition is going to be crucial to maintain electric reliability. But even the petroleum's piece, you know, right now petroleum as a backup fuel source to maintain reliability during winter for the electric system is one of our most important reliability levers that we have. As we start thinking about the transition of the gas infrastructure, it's apt to become more important and to keep it, you know, understand those, those connections between those two systems. And even a lot of the programs talking about, you know, the, the success of demand response, the success of some of these buildings programs are so tightly integrated to effective load forecasting and demand forecasting, which just drives everything. So, you know, I just want to compliment the work that was done today and just kind of keep it front and center on everyone's mind that as we move forward through the development of this plan and the evolution of the plan, it's so tightly integrated, all these different components together. So as one piece of them changes, we've just got to be mindful that another piece might change too as a result of that. So thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you for those comments, Richard. Actually, I think I want to double-click a little bit on that. I, I kind of feel as though we've witnessed a jigsaw puzzle being assembled in front of us. But it's going to take a number of efforts to intersect all the things and presentations. So amazing. Thank you so much. A couple of things jump out at me, and I think we're going to want to dive a little deeper into many of them, but, you know, certainly the affordability, upfront considerations for residential and industrial uses is going to be something to, to consider. But I think the focus on variability of source and reliability and resilience that came through this plan seems, I want to say honest and accurate. So thank you for the effort. That was pretty amazing.
Thank you for that. We, we have been talking a lot as a team about systems, and that's what I think I'm hearing both of you say, is the interconnectedness of, of all of these sectors, but also the systems that serve them, is something that the plan theoretically should bring together. So I'm glad you're seeing that. That's one of our jobs together. So thank you. Any other questions or thoughts? Okay, next slide, please. Thank you again to all of our presenters today. I will just ask now if the members have any other business to bring before the board. Hearing none, I'll move to our final slide. I do want to thank all the board members and their delegates for coming to this meeting and for your participation today. For members of the public, in each of you, we will be posting the material shared on our website here. They may already be posted, if not, very shortly. It's complex material, and we want everyone to have access to it. So please do give it a look and let us know if you have further questions. Also, we are planning to reconvene this summer to advance a draft State Energy Plan for public comment, so please do stay tuned for the next meeting to be scheduled in the near future. In the meantime, I do want to remind you, the headline, "New York State Energy Plan Guides the Energy-Related Decision-Making to Build an Abundant, Reliable, Affordable, and Clean Energy System for All New Yorkers." That's really what we've been talking about today and what this draft plan will represent, that we are able to solve for multiple things at once. And I'm really appreciative of the deep thinking that went into integrating this through our pathways analysis and the other frameworks that were shared today. Also, for the members of the public who observed this meeting here in Albany and via the webcast, thank you. We look forward to extended engagement as this year progresses, and please do visit the website to sign up for ongoing email updates. With that, this meeting of the State Energy Planning Board is hereby adjourned. Thank you all so much.